First order of business, public hearing. Increased sewer rates for 2023 through May 2024. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing on that?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or questions? Alright, the second public hearing we might as well open at the same time. Amended property maintenance local law six dash 2022.
I'll make a motion to open that public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got any questions or comments on that? Okay, approval of amendments from August 17th. Regular board will leave the public hearings open. Say somebody from there.
I make a motion, we approve the meetings of August 17, 2022.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of vouchers. Vouchers, general funds seventy-six thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Water fund two hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Sewer fund seventeen thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. And then the capital one, one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents. To note, one million eighty-seven thousand nine seventy-seven oh five was that paid at number four. They have been, all the vouchers have been added. I move to approve, pay those bills. Second.
Okay, one thing I would like to say about the water fund, the two hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. One reason that's so high this month is we have a bill from Spencer, our contractor, on the water project. And basically, it's for all the conduit and everything, the electricals there. And our short-term bond has not come through yet. We expect it to be there today. So basically, we're paying this out of reserves. And then when the bond comes through, we'll put the money back in reserves. That way, we can keep our contractors moving. So, that's the reason that's so high.
One of the things that happened this month too, Mayor. Fifty-four thousand, about fifty-four K was paid to Beamer School District for tax on the water filtration plant.
So with that, you've got first and second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business, Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project. The only thing really left on that is long-term bonding on the sewer portion of it. And we finally got a date with EFC to close that out, and that's November 3rd. Hopefully, after that, we can take this off our sheet. Okay, Phase Two, wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
So the contractor's making some progress in Lagoon One with the sludge on the bottom. They're still struggling with some groundwater infiltration. But they ran the barge around there, de-sludge, everything they could get from the surface. They got the water down. Now they're basically squeaking it over in one area and processing it that way. They're about half done. The disinfection building has arrived. It'll be set on the slab soon. There was some damage during transit that we're getting squared away. And we're working with Henderson and APG on the aeration and diffuser submittals. Getting them in and getting them to get that work.
Okay. Come back to the local law on the sewer rate increase. We need the public hearings open.
I'm sorry, Joe, one other thing. Next month, we will need to do, we'll need to do a change order to the contractor.
On the sludge.
On the sludge, just to increase their contract. It's not, it, approved the money part last month. We decided to increase their contract. We'll do that as they, as they need it.
That one, go on, that one?
On the wastewater, yep.
Okay, groundwater well development project.
So contractor, Manfred, one of the contractors, has just started mobilizing the diffusing pipe. They've begun some work tying in at the building. That's progressing pretty quickly. Joe mentioned the short-term financing, getting that in place. That's gonna happen here soon. And there's a groundbreaking on September 28th at 10:00 AM. Everybody should have gotten an invitation to how it's coming. Did everybody get that? Did the board members get it? Yeah, Wednesday, 28th.
Okay, on the groundwater project, we had to do, we need to do an amendment with Municipal Solutions on our contract. Basically, for them to do the short-term bonding so we have money to pay the bills until we can get into the long-term bonding with EFC. So I just need a motion to authorize me to sign that contract with Municipal Solutions.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor? Okay, street lighting, LED conversion program. Got an email from Sean Cox. They did do the final inspection last week. Just waiting for National Grid to say it's okay and approve it. We have submitted a second round of rebates on the lights to National Grid. And we should be receiving twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-some dollars in rebates in LED lights. The only other holdup is we have five, five lights to go up. We're just waiting for permission from National Grid for New York County authorized contractors to be able to put them up. That's about where we are with that. We're getting, getting close to the comprehensive plan. Basically, that's pretty much ready to go. I know the town meeting came before ours. Happens every couple months out of the year. And I know the town approved it, and they scheduled a public hearing for the next board meeting. They might be, jump the gun a little bit because really, we need to schedule a public hearing. And then after we have the public hearing, if everything's alright, we can adopt. So I'm asking the board, schedule a public hearing for our October 1st meeting. Don, ready as a plan?
I'll make that motion. Do we have a date?
October 19th.
Okay, thank you for the comprehensive plan.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Who was my second? Chuck or Tim? Okay, thanks.
Music in the Park.
Music in the Park concluded last night with the concert Phil Burke Card and Cassie Sauer. We hope next year to have, so that rain or shine, we will have an alternative method for music in the park if it rains. So that if there's trouble, the other people will know and will have it. You know, probably be in the fairgrounds, not under a pavilion. We hope to do the same format with the movie. We're hoping to add a kind of a comedy night with the Gong. If you're anybody remembers the Gong Show. And we'll bring in talent and a couple of people that will bring the Gong and we'll have some fun with that. And I believe, Mr. Russell, we can use some of the money for prizes if it's scrap money. Can we do that or can we not?
Uh, yeah, I think we can.
You're the only one who remembers the Gong Show, I guess I know.
I disagree with you there, but that's fine. There's a few others that don't. And anybody hasn't seen it, you can bring it up. So, Music in the Park did well, and I hope that it continues to do well. And I'm hoping we can increase attendance. Some of the movie went well with Peter Ostrom in the auditorium. I don't know if we had that before last meeting. Kids won some autograph movies from Peter and some posters and stuff. So, we appreciate it, and Peter did well. Thank you.
I asked Danielle to leave dog control on only because I had a dog control officer asked me to check into something. As you know, we are now the town village chairs of dog control. And they're taking over all our local codes. But one thing he brought up to me, and was he had a, I think it was about the second day school started. There was a group of parents at school bus stop, and one of them had a dog. And the dog was not on the leash. And I guess he had a complaint on that from one of the other parents that was there. And nothing, and the only thing in our dog control law that mentions anything about a leash says all dogs when in public parks should be on a leash no more than six feet long and kept at least thirty feet away from children's playgrounds. That's the only thing that we reference to the leash. He's thinking that we should have a village-wide leash law, but yet in another section of our law, it says prohibited acts, and one of them is run at large. And I'm just wondering if maybe we just wanna monitor this a little bit. Because in the mornings and evenings, I see a lot of people out with their dogs. And just about everyone I see is on a leash. I haven't seen too many unattended dogs. I don't really know if we need, it's up to the board. I don't really think we need to get real quick and change. But you guys are out there too, so you see.
I've seen a few not on a leash, but they were attended, I guess you would call it.
My thought was, if you did wanna change it, and Joe, you can I would say, where we have all dogs when in a public park should be on a leash. I would say just take the word "park" out of there, but in public. And that should recover everything. But I don't know. Did that work?
Yeah, that works.
Whether the board will want it.
What does the dog control officer say about it?
He said some places have lease law for the whole community. Some of them is just down like school grounds and public parks. He was asking about it because he had a complaint. And he said he couldn't really act on the complaint because there was nothing in our, our law.
For safety reasons.
Personally, I didn't think it was a problem.
For safety reasons, I think they should be on a leash. You just wander around on sidewalks or whatever because basically, you're already public, you know, there's people around. But.
What exempts them from the leash law?
Says that only in public.
The only other thing that says, Dan, that says prohibited acts, they can't run at large. If you don't see what the law.
Everybody figures out a way to script the law.
I just, myself, I feel people should have a few rights.
Well, we remember right a few years ago, we had a dog ran up through town. Got a few people in the community, including a police officer. And so, and I agree with you, Mayor. And I'm concerned about people that cannot act responsibly with the pets at all. It's unfortunate that that's the thing you have to worry about. So, and I agree, people should have rights, but I don't wanna see a kid. I've had, I've had a daughter bitten in the face by a dog, so I know what it's about. But I'm not going to.
Well, if you wanna just pick this next month and read through the law yourself and bring it back. Maybe a little bit? Give you a chance to look over the, whole, whole section of that code, and then we'll bring it back up. Draft amended property maintenance law, I think we should wait on that too because it's only draft motorized vehicle local law. That's one that everybody just got. Basically, with that saying, this, if the county or whatever ends up with trails through the villages, nobody could be able to run e-bikes, motorcycles, ATVs, or snowmobiles through the village. So you wanna mull that one over for a month before we schedule a public hearing?
I don't.
Because you just got it today. I mean, it's not like you've had a chance to read through it.
I make a motion to, we take thirty days to review this and discuss it at our October 19th meeting. And.
Second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Can we read the law so people know what it says, Mayor?
Yeah. Basically, what it says, it says Village of Laaville, local law number seven of the year 2022. A local law to amend Chapter 189 of the Code of Village of Laaville. Being enacted by the village board of the town Village of Laaville follows authority. This local law is enacted pursuant to authority of the New York State Municipal Home Rule Law and the New York State Village Law. Section two, Chapter 189 of the Code of Village of Laaville should be amended by adding an article to read as follows. Appendix nine, special designated trails. It shall be unlawful to operate any motorized vehicle or special, on any special trails within the village limits to include motorized bicycles and other types of motorized equipment. Section three, balance of Chapter 189 of the Code of the Village of Laaville. Except as amended by this local law, the balance of Chapter 189 of the Code of the Village of Laaville as it currently exists is hereby ratified. Section four, effective date, this local law should be effective on filing the department's status required by municipal home.
Thank you.
Craft surcharges. New business. June 2022, zero on sewer. August 2022, fifteen thousand on water. Need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the surcharge for August 2022, fifteen thousand dollars for water.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, right? Water fund budgeting. Have a motion to let Danielle make those amendments. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those county 2023 exemption question there. Does anybody wanna make any changes on that? I think everything is. See no reason to make any changes.
Has anybody raised an issue?
Not yet.
No?
It's around June November 15th though, so you guys do have time if you need it.
We did make a change a couple of years ago on the solar part, other than that, but still the change.
I don't, I'll make the motion that if we approve it tonight and we decide to make a change, we still can correct it next month. What I'm thinking, Mr. Russell.
What changes would you wanna make, Joe?
Probably nothing, but what if somebody brings something up? What I'm saying is so that we don't forget next month, we've got ourselves covered. And then if we do have changes, we can, we can bring them up, which is probably not gonna happen.
I mean, either way, that's fine.
I'll make a motion that we, we stay with the exemptions as we've had them in the year 2022.
I'll second.
All in favor?
So do you want me to just hold it and not submit it yet?
We also got Municipal Solutions continuing to slow their contract renewal. That's basically the contract where they deal with all the filings with the state and everything that deal with all our projects. So I just need a motion to be able to sign that contract and go on.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Alright, we got a disposition list. We need permission to that's old village stuff, and it's old stuff from the courts. And we did get permission from the courts to get rid of that. We just need the board permission to hear of it. And would you get a copy of that, Ross?
The only thing that I can see, though, is like number 15. That's only like a year old. Should that be saved for any longer?
That's just something we track. It's not something like, it's, it's just an Excel sheet we track outside of the bank statement, so it's not an official document.
Okay, okay. That's about the only question I had.
It's just to keep like a daily tab.
It's like a scrapbook. I'll make the motion to grant this file of the, the files that we have listed on this page.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence, local newsletter. Anybody got any questions on that? If they do, Mickey's right here.
What did they ever figure out about the show?
Right now, it looks, I'm still waiting to hear back from Scott or somebody just to verify. But it looks like it'll be October 9th in town. They'll be out here to do the video stuff.
Any other questions on that? Okay. We got Town of Pinney, fire coverage contract. And I'm gonna jump down a second one because we also got the Town of Harrisburg, fire protection. Copies of those letters have also gone to the fire department. I don't know if you guys wanna say anything on that, or?
We had a meeting last month, and I attended the fire department's meeting. And we asked Harrisburg to present a letter today, which they did. And I think the fire department is in agreement that will do that. As far as Pinney, that has come up since then. So my thought is, Joe, that we make the motion tonight to accept Harrisburg. And then we make the motion to also accept Pinney with you gentlemen presenting it at your next meeting. And then please add from there.
Yeah, so our, and our goal was to.
Firstly, I would prefer the fire department figure out what they wanna do, will come back to us and say, yes, we'd like to accept them before we go ahead and.
They've already said they'll accept the Harrisburg one, but not the Pinney one, Joe, because we were unaware of that. Am I misspoken there?
Um, we haven't actually brought to the members yet to know that our goal is to let you guys be aware first. Then you would refer it to our board, which will then bring it to the members, which then can come back to your board with our recommendation, if that's what you wanna do.
That's the way I'd like to see it. Because the other thing that would have to happen is probably the Harrisburg contract will have to be amended. And it'll have to be a contract drawn up for Pinney.
Right.
Because they've never been involved with Laaville Fire Department. It's a work in progress.
Quick work. It's sad, is what it is.
Deep down, I think everybody wished Copenhagen would solve their problems and then they'd stay with Copenhagen. Plus, it's closer, but I just want everybody aware of that, what was going on with Harrisburg and Pinney.
Does we have a second for the motion on Harrisburg?
No, we're not done.
We're not gonna, are we on the budget?
I'll strike the motion.
Okay.
The fire department, get things figured off, come back to us, and then we'll start.
Okay.
And then, as always, it looks like there's gonna be an increase in health insurance. You can see the number from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Any questions on that? Okay. Moving on. Village attorney, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
I got a few things. DRI, the downtown renovation project. The thing's on track with that. We should have it submitted this Friday. It's gotta be in before.
Draft just came in this afternoon, did you see it? The drafts.
I've seen one of the drafts, yeah.
No, but the draft application just came in this afternoon, an email. I don't know if you got it.
I don't think I've seen that yet.
I see it on my phone before I come here.
And the other thing that's gonna happen with that is something a little bit different this year. Last year, after the application with them, we did a PowerPoint presentation with the state. This year, they're actually gonna come to Laaville, and we're gonna take a walkthrough. And that's scheduled for October 11th. So, hopefully, maybe it'll be our turn this year. Going back to the fire department, they're putting some new cameras in up there. And I think there's twelve of them, if I remember. And the three of them are gonna be on the outside. And if anybody anybody wants to see basically, right now, it looks like the fire department's approved, right? It's five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. They're wondering if the village would be willing to put in any money in towards those cameras. Three of those cameras will be on the outside of the buildings, facing, one will be facing towards our park over there. And I believe the fire department has gone with a four MP camera, right?
That's what the membership approved is. This is the membership approved, but there's the option for the eight MP.
But they also have a larger upgrade, eight MP. And it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars more for the better camera. It's up to the village, but I would suggest that, yeah, we help the fire department out. But I would also suggest those three cameras on the outside of the building get upgraded for the higher resolution. Especially with some of the problems we've been having over there in the park.
We talked about this in our office meeting. And I believe I already mentioned it there to you briefly. And I think that we, we have an obligation to help the fire department on those because not only are they part of their safety, but they will protect. And I think that we, we have an obligation to help the fire department on those because not only are they part of their safety, but they will protect the park that we own. So I'd like to suggest that we talk between now and the next meeting as to how much funds we want to give them for that. And discuss it with them and see if we can come up with something that we all agree to.
Well, to upgrade those cameras, it'd be roughly. Just on up three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
We have U J A G money.
What's that?
We have the U J A G money.
Well, that's, so if we upgraded, if the fire department upgraded those three cameras, it would bump their bill up to a little over sixty-one hundred dollars. And I would suggest that we can use, got a couple of things we can use. One is the U J A G money we can use on parks and things. Then there's another area I can, I've got to check, but I think I could. I would almost suggest maybe we give the fire department half of that, three thousand. But that would be upgrading those outside three cameras to the higher resolution. I'm tired of that. It's up to the board.
He said three thousand.
Did you say three thousand or half three thousand there?
What was it? I said three thousand.
I make the motion if.
Because it's going to be a little over six.
I make the motion if we give the fire department the three thousand worth of camera upgrades.
I second. All in favor? You okay with that, Craig?
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we've talked in the past about E V stations, basically, uh, one at the Four Corners, one at Veterans Park, and one here at the village offices. Right now, there's a grant out there. We basically will pay for a hundred percent of them if we get the grant. And that's got to be in by September thirtieth. So we've got all the quotes and everything, and then working with Megan and Becky. Becky's with the E V people and Megan's with the planning at the county. So we're hoping to have that grant applied for by the deadline of September thirtieth. And then when we get the grant, we can decide where we want to go with our E V station. Especially if, talking with Becky, if we get the grant, it's a hundred percent paid for, so we won't get too many grants at a hundred percent.
And with the cameras that the fire department's going to put, that's going to help.
You're adding one of those E V stations.
That's going to help because I have been talking to Jonathan Fitzgerald at the terms north, or Lake Effect Head. He's got a charging station behind his building and he says people are messing with that already. So he said if we put E V stations around, he says he really recommends having cameras in your own.
Okay, then Tim sent out after last month's meeting, because he's had some complaints and codes regarding sales that never end in the village. So did everybody get a copy of the two local laws he sent around in the different communities?
They're not as packed as I thought. It's not a meeting I'm doing. You can, you can review them again, but the one that I suggested, actually, is the one that Watertown, City Watertown has. Very simple, but to the point. And we can basically mirror that with a few, you know, changes.
Tim, would you do me a favor and keep that email to me again?
Yeah. Did you send those to Joe? Did you get them, Joe?
Didn't I?
Because if we did anything, I would think that Tim says.
How so? We're on again.
Reading over the Watertown's law would be one to try and adopt similar to theirs. It's, it's simple, no permitting or anything, but it just. People can't have a sale three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It's not long. So we'll bring that back up and I'll take that. You got that down? That we'll bring out. All right, clerk Prezger, do you have anything?
I do not.
Chief of police.
All we have is the reports. We should all have the reports that I sent out. But then I would like to give a shout out to the police department. At work, uh, in term right, it's working very well. There's a few people that apparently don't understand signs and can't figure them out. But if they don't learn very soon, they will face the burden of a movie violation like that. So, but it's working very well. First week it went quite well. I stood out there in the middle of the street and anybody tried to signal, the first couple got around me and I stood in front of them. And then from that point on, I'm pretty good. I want to talk to everybody. The second week, there were, we didn't have someone physically there, but we were watching it, monitoring it. From a distance to see what would happen. We didn't have cars sitting there. Most ninety percent, ninety-five percent obeyed and did what they were supposed to. There was five or six at most on any given day that tried to make left-hand turns. Some did. This week, we've been monitoring again. Couple of days there was nobody, couple of days there was three, four. In the very near future, we will be monitoring it much more aggressively. And there may be a ticked or zow issue. I, that's not my goal. My goal is to have people realize the signs are there for a reason. But it's quite obvious that some people drove up and had no idea those signs were even there. And if you look at the stop sign, you cannot miss it. It was right beside the stop sign on one side of the road and on the other side of the road it's there. I've asked Paul to get flags and put flags on them too. I'm trying to, outside of putting lights flashing on them, I'm not sure what else to do, but in the near future, that will be checked a little more closely.
I think it's going to be second nature for a lot of people.
Very popular. I had one complaint the first morning and the rest of the complaints I got the rest of the week were all positive.
I have you behind that car.
Yes, you heard.
Super dense. Do you have anything, Paul?
I have a few things. Um, just to let you know, we had a meeting with Kraft a few weeks ago. Um, just to talk over things. They have a new mill manager there. Um, everything seems to be going good as far as Kraft and the village is concerned. Um. A few other things are drainage problem, or drainage project on Jackson Street is completed. Um, as far as drainage, stone, rebuilding the shoulder. Um, Barrett paving will be back in in a few weeks to pave the street, mill it and pave it. Um, and when you walked in, you can see we've, we've purchased new village signs, welcome signs. I think they, uh, they're very nice. They'll look nice. There'll be one by Walmart and then there'll be another one by the high bridge. Uh, we'll get those up as soon as I can. Um, I'm looking into, or I'm in the process of putting a grant in for the Lewis County Streetscape Grant, which would be, uh. We've talked about it for a few years, the putting a walkway in between the movie theater and Gary's Restaurant, that vacant area that we own. Um, I've been working with Bernie and Cara on that. They were originally, um, had done some work on that stuff. Um, it's going to be all A D compliant, so hopefully we'll, we'll get the grant worked and we'll see that next year. And I believe that's up.
In the wintertime, Paul, is there any way you can change that to snowflakes instead of leaves? Electrical signs.
And on another note, I should have said it when I was talking before, I think I missed, mentioned it last month. The village has been fortunate. We are going to have a new playground in Veterans Park. It's being built right now. It's all maintenance free and everything. Hopefully we'll see it by the end of October. We have received the skirting for basically the edging that will go around it. That's already been delivered. We have it stored. The only thing is we may not get the playground up until next spring because it's late in the year. But it's all right to see where we get it from. Basically, the playground's been donated by Geimo Engineering. And the only thing that's costing the village is our manpower to put it up.
Before I knew Paul's used V C A at the wash.
Does that man doesn't mean?
They worked on that project before, man, but, uh.
I'm just.
I had existing plans for it, so, yeah, he's just using old plans.
But basically the playground, it's thirty-six by forty-six, uh, sixty-three children to be added at one time. And basically we're just adding on to what we got, like Paul and I, we want to get more use out of that Veterans Park. And well, next year, we'd like to even have more picnic tables and walking paths and things up through there, so we're hoping this playground will help bring some people into it.
And that should go right along with the grant that we're putting in for Veterans Park to do a walkway. Uh, walking trail all the way around Veterans Park, um, picnic tables out there. Uh, everything will be A D compliant or handicap accessible. Like to do a big concrete pad in front of the bandstand, so we do have bands there. People in wheelchairs can come up and they don't have to go across the grass. A nice place to sit, so. We've got a lot of great ideas for Veterans Park, um, long-term, maybe a splash pad. But it's such a beautiful park up there that is underutilized, um, so Joe and I have been doing tons of work trying to get tons of stuff up there. And with the fire department putting cameras in, you know, in, in the future, maybe we'll look at with the E V stations, maybe putting some more cameras up, maybe on the bandstand to watch stuff up there, but.
Okay, is that it, Paul? Yep. Cap of future planning, anything?
Um, I guess basically what you've just talked about, um, I guess I can reiterate that the, I would assume the other four board members support the endeavor. That's all.
Anything on personnel?
No.
Finance committee?
Uh, finance, I did the June audit yesterday and as of yesterday, July wasn't ready, but the one that is, we'll get those updated. Um, other than that, I don't have anything.
I did that today, by the way.
Sure. And I've gone and dialed in tomorrow, so maybe Friday.
No, that's fine.
We'll see.
Okay, ladies and fire department?
I guess we just, is that everything we need to say?
Police department?
No.
Dining board, zoning board, nothing specific?
They have a meeting next week.
Municipal board?
Nothing really. Tom, Tom had a quite a long meeting last week. I said, you know, about three hours.
County?
Um. We were getting a check from the county to who she paid her tenure.
For what?
The, uh.
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand.
I don't remember. We've been getting it out of my hands.
Okay. Uh, we're, we're receiving some, some money from the county, as are all the other municipalities and, uh, that'll, that'll help with our, with our general fund. Other than that, I have nothing.
Recreation, do you have anything on?
I met with Mr. Myers a few times this week. He shared with me the figures of the breakdown of the towns. He said that you have a copy of that report to him, so, yeah. If there's anything you want to note it or whatnot, um, I do suggest we, we're, we've talked about trying to get on the same page with, uh. Costs or trying to tackle that ahead of the, ahead of time or whatnot, so, um, if you want to schedule something, see who we want it about, I would say Randy, or, uh. Mike Young with the rep commission group, so whatever you want to do there, just find him.
Basically, on recreation, when it came to the summer rec program with the county and what the county said, that they wouldn't pay so much for outside children. Basically, there was sixty-four children from outside the town and village of Laualva in that program. And all that information was sent to Ryan Duchesne along with pages out of Double Play's actual report. So we tried to put it on a spreadsheet form and break it down, the percentages and the number of children from, we also listed where the children, they ranged all the way from Harrisville to Boondocks Park, believe it or not. Sixty-four, so.
How many were in the program, in the program? Was it, was more than half of them?
I'm trying to think. I think there was a hundred and eighty-two or a hundred and eighty-four. I'd have to go look at the sheet. I know sixty-four of them were from outside of the town and village. The only other thing is we were awarded, uh, two grants. One was to go towards the summer rec program and one was to go to the skating to buy new skates for the free skate. We've been awarded the grants, we just haven't received the funding yet. Do you have anything you want to, on the rate card?
Just with the rate, I related to the digital radar signs. I'll probably have to face the chief rogue there about that, but we do have now six municipalities within rate code that are interested in those signs, so. Uh, we've been talking to D O T. We're going to actually have a conference call with them to see what, if there's anything that can be done on their end to help out with that. Um, and then also we've been talking to a company that, a manufacturer of those signs that's well equipped and has some demonstrations of what they can do. Because they can record data, so like if somebody's speeding through, they can pick up what time of day and when and that type of thing, so you can actually see charts and kind of get an idea of. Maybe we should set up some law enforcement around this time because this is the time people are speeding through that area to try to.
We started looking at that today as well, we're going to touch base with you.
Okay.
About the future of the life of the path that that can.
Yep, yep. So, so, yeah, I'll touch base with you because we just want to get an idea of what locations, uh, the municipalities are looking at putting them, so we can take that to D O T when we meet with them and.
I sent your email to Randy.
Okay, perfect. All right, perfect.
And he's got all the literature too that you, so that way he can pick what he thinks we need here in the village.
And then other than that, the rate code board will be meeting next Wednesday, uh, at six o'clock at the Village of Carthage. And we'll have April Roggio from, uh, Publicity University, who's going to be there from the Policy Research Center. And we talked about local foods and the security of local foods in the area and that type of thing, just to ask some questions. I did that and then I'll just mention too that Towne Corbin has requested the joint rate code, so we've taken that up at the board meeting also. I don't know if there's anything, or Tim, I'm going to elaborate.
Okay, moving back to our public hearings, increased sewer rates for twenty twenty-three and May twenty twenty-four. Does anybody that's came in later have any comments on, on that or questions? Okay, we need a motion to close a public hearing on that.
I need a motion to close that public hearing, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion to adopt the local law for the sewer rates. And in case anybody doesn't know, what basically. With our sewer project down there, we need to raise fees a little bit and the engineering company figures we need to go up seven and a half percent. And I suggested, that's a pretty hefty height, that we've got to spread it out over to the next three billing cycles, about two and a half percent. And two and a half percent, and I'm hoping maybe we'll not have to do that third two and a half percent, but. And that two and a half percent is probably going to average five fifty to six fifty, five dollars and fifty cents and six dollars and fifty cents a year increase is all it's going to be. I meant nowadays inflation, every dollar counts, but. We're trying to get a twenty million dollar project done and still keep costs down as much as we can.
I think that increase is less than the inflation rate, so I think we're good.
So we have a first and second on that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public area amended property maintenance law. Anybody got any questions on that one? Basically, what's happening there is the village has a property maintenance law when it comes to snow removal in the wintertime. After a letter and so many days, property doesn't get the snow removed, the village can go in and remove the snow and charge it back to the property. There's nothing on the books for grass lawns. There's nothing on the books for grass lawns over. And the code department this year has gotten a lot of complaints on laws. So basically what this property maintenance law does is now if you lawns over ten inches in height, you'll get a letter from the village, certify. You'll have ten days to either do it yourself or hire a contractor. If not, then the village will go in and know it and it'll get charged back to the property. But basically with that law is. So if boys have any questions on that, we need a motion to close the public hearing on that one.
I need a motion to reclose the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we need a motion to adopt it.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I guess that brings us down to public comment. Everybody have any public comment?
I do. I'm from Lewis County Head Start, and I would like to address the issue with parking on Waters Terrace. I think when that law was adopted in, you were considering high school students only. And we are an agency that employs almost twenty staff at the facility. And so now we have no parking on Waters Terrace. There's no movement for our staff, our families. We serve twenty-seven families at that site, as well as the contractors that come and serve our children. We definitely, the parking has become an issue. And I believe that there was no consideration to other businesses in the area when it came to taking care of the cars now. So I just would like that to be known. I do think that we have caused another problem because it's just shifting the parking to Key Bank and over to the park.
Well, there's just no parking in the park, you know. And the other, and the other thing is with American Legion is, except for the spots that say members only, that's public parking. Because the village has a memorandizing understanding of the Legion that we can use that for parking and then we plow it and sand it for them in the wintertime. It's just, part of the problem is people got to walk a little more. But there is, I believe, at least eleven spots, Waters Terrace.
The signage is messed up and they still got a couple of things they got to change on the signage.
Mayor, the diagram that Paul just passed out shows some. He did, he read it, Paul and I are up there today.
So let me start. Originally, this was brought up not about school kids or anything. It was about safety for my guys plowing in the wintertime. When you have forty cars there all day long, I cannot get my plow through there. And if I do, somebody opens their door, boom, somebody's going to get hurt. That, that's originally why this was brought up. It wasn't brought up about kids parking there or anything. So like Joe said, when we initially did this law, we said we would come back and revisit it. And the signage that was put up there is my mistake. It was put up there wrong. And I was notified by a trustee, went up there, we took signs down, had my crew, which I thought, put up the right signs. But it was, it was big mess, mess, mess up. So Joe and I went up there today because like we said, we were going to revisit it. And I just passed out to all the trustees what Joe and I believe should happen up there, which gives us, I can't even tell you how many parking spots. It gives you, it gives you seven parking spots with no restrictions, which would be from the eighteen-twelve driveway all the way back to just beyond where Rob Gosse lives. So those would be, and I've got the parking spots measured out at twenty-foot parking spots, which is a legal parking spot. So that would give you seven unrestricted parking spots. So you could park there all day, all night. From the, we'll say right from North State Street back to the eighteen-twelve house would be no parking from there to the corner, which, which is what it always has been. There was one parking spot between the driveway and no parking to the corner. But what I did with this plan is I want to give people when they pull out of their driveway, twenty feet on each side of their driveway. So if they pull out and there's a car parked there, they can actually see something coming. Because we had an issue with the kid, or with people, excuse me, with people parking right tight to people's driveways or into them. So, so we've got no parking from the corner to the eighteen-twelve house driveway. And then from the eighteen-twelve driveway to, like I said, Rob Gosse's, which is the third driveway up the road, which is roughly, we'll say two hundred and something. So you have seven parking spots there. From, from that area back to where our existing no parking signs are, there would be probably, I'm going to say eight, ten parking spots that will be restricted. No parking Monday through Friday, seven to four, September first through June thirtieth. And the reason that is, is because there's people's driveway entrances on the south side. They would have a hard time, they have a hard time backing in or pulling out of their driveway. So that's, that's kind of what we came up with. And the board just got it as we walked in here, so I don't know what their comments are.
Just, just one thing, Paul, for, just for clarification. I thought you said twenty feet, but did you mean two feet? I don't know how you would leave twenty feet, you said for to get out of your driveway?
On each side of the driveway. Yes.
Every driveway in that area?
Yes, every driveway that has any type of parking.
Twenty feet, two feet?
Twenty.
That seems like a lot.
It isn't. Go out there and look. So you got to.
Paul, I've driven down the street, I have an idea. I'm just asking, I just, it just seems like twenty feet's a long ways to me, but I'm not a measurement guy.
So, so this right here is in conflicts, the law that we passed. So we would have to have another public hearing.
Correct.
And I guess what I would like to say is, when this all came up, it was said, we need to pass this tonight if Paul isn't here. And I wanted to take our time and do that, which we didn't do. And so, and I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure that I like this idea because I believe that there can be more than seven parking spaces on Waters Terrace. But I would, I would recommend now that, we have to have a public hearing to strike the law, correct? Mr. Russell?
Well, you have to, you'd have to have a public hearing to amend it.
Now, with that being said, until we do that, the law that we have on the books doesn't match this. And I don't believe, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, that it still matches the signs because of the way the signs are placed?
There is one sign that is in front of the eighteen-twelve house that has to come down. But if the, if you look at the other signs that I have, no parking Monday through Friday, that, those two signs are correct with this law.
And if you drove up through there before, if you're not, you can Google it and you'll find it. What Paul's got on his thing here, I said to him today, somehow that's no parking here to corner sign was always there and it should be back there because you don't want cars right up there on the edge of North State Street. That sign, when they were changing signs around, basically they took that one down and came up missing. But that one's got to go back. So I'm pretty sure basically if you were to, that first sign that says no parking September first through June will be coming down. That no parking here to corner sign will be going back into place where it should be. And that was originally there. Right, Paul? Correct?
I would like to request, like I did two or three months ago, that we discuss this with the stakeholders before we make a decision.
Dan, we've, I see where you're coming from in one space, but the other thing that's got to happen here is some of these stakeholders, they got to go to like the county, the school, some of these places where their employees are parking out all the streets, taking. The county built that new courthouse a few years ago. Their whole parking lot left. And now they're all over there in Veterans Park on the main drag.
And I totally agree with you there, Joe. And like I said.
We can't solve, the village can't solve all these problems. County's got to solve some of theirs, the school's got to, I mean.
We provide.
Right now, the school's got a capital project coming up, over fourteen million dollars that they're going to want the voters to weigh in on. Not one thing in that capital project is an area for their students to park.
We provide parking on a first come, first served basis. Health, safety and welfare of the community. Randy Rogan will tell you this week, we had problems with county employees parking next to our place for two hours. Did I address that? Yes, and I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is, we don't owe it to anybody to create parking, I get it. What I, what I'm suggesting, Mayor, is that we look at this, we talk about it, and I'm sorry, but three months ago, you said Paul wants this passed tonight.
I didn't say that, Dan, I said he wants a decision because it'd been back and forth. We'd have a public hearing.
And I.
Two people showed up, none of them were against it. You had your hearing at the, at the fire hall.
But I told you I would meet with the people once again, so far as I can certainly.
I mean, you can beat a dead horse, that's what we're doing here.
I guess, and I, yeah, I don't think we need to have more meetings on this. I guess my question is, we spent three months deciding this. What's wrong with the law that was passed on the books? I didn't vote for it only because I thought we should have looked at other options as well. However, what's wrong with the law that's on the books?
You can't get up to?
What is the law?
New law you mean, or the old law?
The law that was passed on May whatever. We said we were going to, and I think Ken said it.
I don't think there's anything wrong with.
Right, so why can't we put a sign up that reflects the law and therefore take a look at it? But we can't take a look at it if people don't know where to park because they, they don't know what the laws, they read the signs.
Can I just ask what the difference is between the plows going to Park Ave? Park Ave has parking.
Park Ave is a wider street. I can get my big plow down through there. When you get up towards halfway up Waters Terrace, the road actually narrows. And then as you go around the bend.
Right, I get way off the bottom. The other question I was wondering is, you stated from September first to June that it's going to be, correct me because I may have gotten it wrong, but there's going to be limited parking or no parking from a certain spot?
No parking from seven to four.
So, and it was because people can't get out of their driveways to back up? What is the difference between June and September, from September to June?
Because we monitored it to see the amount of traffic that was parked there from the time period. It had seemed like right in the beginning of September is when people were starting, the whole road was being backed up.
They were parking halfway across people's driveways and everything.
I mean, this, like I said in the beginning, this was all done, it's not about the businesses and parking. It was about safety for plowing road. And, I shouldn't say just that, and the residents that lived there on the, on the south side were having a hard time pulling out of their driveway because there were so many cars parked there. And the cars were parked right at the corner of their driveway, both corners. And they couldn't, you couldn't look up the road to see any cars because there's so many cars there. You can't see.
I guess I just need to know what the law is because I was, when I parked there a week ago, when there was no sign, there was a threat that it would be towed. And then there was, so I guess what is the law that's on the books is what I need to know. Because the, yeah.
And, and in the, in the whole scheme of this, I would like to see us pass a resolution. Correct me if I'm wrong, I emailed everybody, I did, I did something else. That if, we have, and I'd like to add to that, if we have somebody blocking somebody's driveway, a ticket isn't going to do anything because they can't get out. We need to have some kind of mechanism where at our discretion, it can be towed at the owner's expense. The other thing is, if somebody gets two or three tickets within a year's time with the same registered vehicle, it should be the option to the village to tow the car at their expense. Because that is a fair deal. And I would, I would like, I would like for that to be, be considered. Because right now, the tickets aren't effective. But we also have, we also have.
Why don't you just read that? Don't she doesn't have to see all the scribble on there? The only problem with towing, Dan, is these new modern cars, if something gets messed up on one of them that was being towed, the village is going to be liable for possibly large expense.
We could side swipe a building with a plow truck. That negligence, I'm not saying it's right, but.
Well, I mean, if you got somebody that's continuing parking where they're not supposed to be parking and get the tickets on a regular basis, Amy, and she's a judge of the agreement, she's also the associate judge for the town here. And she says we can do a civil adjustment against them and bring them into court. And she says that's the legal way to do it.
And you can also scot-free the registration, not their license, but the registration because I reviewed that. But I can tell you that it's, we have an issue. And somebody here said we now have an issue on Key Bank. Well, again, Key Bank will have to address that themselves. We provide parking on a first come, first served basis. And I don't know why this law has to be from September first to June thirtieth. Paul mentioned that we can't get the plows up through there. I get it, that's probably October, November. It certainly is at May and June or September. So it may be, I mean, it just paints the idea of what we're trying to get at here in my eyes. But that's, that's all I'm going to say.
But your answer to what the law states is. Section two, amendment to chapter one eighty-nine of the Code of the Village of Lawwell. Section one eighty-nine dash fifty-six of the Code of the Village of Lawwell is hereby amended to provide that there is no parking on the north side of Waters Terrace, which it's always been that way. As to the south side of Waters Terrace, there are eleven parking spaces located at point about three hundred and nineteen feet from North State Street toward Eastern Street, the lower end at which parking shall be permitted. From the fifth point of three, toward Eastern Street, there should be no parking on the south side of Waters Terrace from seven o'clock AM to four PM, Monday through Friday, from September first each year through June thirtieth of the following year. And one thing that's up there, and we talked with the police department and things on this, say you're a homeowner up there, you got, okay, you're getting a new roof put on your house or you're getting siding put on your house, your contractor's got to have a place to park. We're not going to have a problem with that contractor parking his pickup trucks or his trailer out there when he's working on your house. We're not going to run up there and give him a ticket. Because we realize he's got to have a place to go.
Before this was passed, they couldn't find a place to park it anyway, so.
And that just opens in my eyes another candle. There'll be all kinds of excuses for people who want to park there, so.
Well, I think Joe and I looked at it. We want to have some parking out there that's not going to affect our DPW crews. If you have people that are parking on Waters Terrace, say from seven o'clock till five o'clock in the afternoon, that not only affects the DPW, but affects the people that live there. Say they, say they put their brush out on their lawn, that means DPW crew can come out and pick it up. And that's, and from, from what we have looked at, it's from that time, seven morning to four at night is when all the traffic's there. After four o'clock, it's a ghost town out through there. So that's why we kind of came up with a secondary plan here of at least allowing some parking there, some unlimited parking, whether it's seven parking spots or eleven, or maybe Head Start or the court or whoever. Start, or the court, or whoever wants to park there, somebody that's gotta go to court for four or five hours. So that's why we kinda looked at it again and said, well, we can give them some parking that's not gonna affect the DPW, the way that it does affect it when there's forty cars parked there all day long.
I wish we had some of the pictures that we could show you that we...
Oh, I'm very aware of where they are. Just at, at this moment, there's no park, the signs say no parking all the way up through. So, I thought that the law was eleven spaces, but the signs say no parking at all from, from North State all the way up to. So, I thought...
That was my fault with the signage. And I never went and looked at it, so...
So when we were threatened that we were going to be towed, then we felt like we needed to come and have a conversation.
Do you want to tell us who threatened you, or was it others?
Um, I believe it was the crew that he's speaking of.
The DPW? Well, our code doesn't allow for us to tow it by here right now.
There you go. Thank you.
So, whatever told you that, Dan, I obviously don't want to help. I'd like to see that.
So, if we're moving forward, can I ask, I know we don't normally debate back and forth, but I think we already passed that goal. Can I ask them a question? Okay. How is the parking on North State Street, state today, last couple of days?
It's full. There's, there's no parking. There's, yeah, there's no availability of this. And most of it is on, on the school side, is two-hour parking, and of course, in front of the eight and twelve houses, two-hour parking. So, there's, there's no parking. We have, like I said, approximately twenty staff that, you know, and unfortunately, it's, I totally get the whole, you know, parking over in Veterans Park parking lot. Unfortunately, our staff are, they're coming and going all day long, because we provide services to the whole, you know, LaVille area. So, doing that, it's, it's making, so people are late for visits, they're late for appointments. So, unfortunately, families are not being served like they should be served, because of now we're, you know, just traveling further distance to, to go to our vehicles. So, I think, you know, having spots is a good plan. It's, you know, it doesn't have to go all the way to the corner. I think that all the way to the corner is a bad idea, because there's, around that corner to the top of the hill is, it gets very jammed up. And so, I would just say, you know, having a few spots back down, it makes sense.
Last week, I met with Dan Myers at his house, double play reasons, but it was obvious, and I forget the status of the signs that time, the signs were right, they were incorrect. But it's pretty obvious to me, there's an obvious starting point, those spots that we have, just whether it's on this map or on the old law, you drag down right now, there's some obvious easy parking on Waters Terrace, towards North State Street. And if you look up where Dan is, about halfway up, and there's an obvious place where nobody should be parking, and I think that's the right thing to do. I just don't know how we, if we wanna revisit something, I don't know if we ever gave this one a fair shot.
Well, I think that lower sign, when it gets removed, which I don't know if it has been yet or not, it's gonna open that area up with people, we know signage there, so they should be able to park. And I say that one that got removed's gotta go back, that's the one that, there's no parking here to corner. You don't want cars right up on the corner, you're trying to pull out there, especially on North State Street, that's a little hairy there.
We're probably never gonna solve all the problems. I would just like to make a decision and move on.
Well, I think the original plan is we get the signage right, because we were gonna run it for a year and see what happened, and then if we had to make changes, we were gonna make changes originally. Wasn't that what was discussed?
That's what I thought, yeah.
So, one calendar year, September first to June first, and then decide, or just before June, decide on what we were gonna do.
And I'm not blaming anybody for a mistake with the signings, but like I said, if we weren't talking about school kids and safety, there's a whole heck of, the day I was at the post office, there was a whole heck of a lot of them parked over on that, and to me it's...
They lost all places to park.
Yeah, they found places to park.
They found places to park.
They're safety issues.
I'm a county employee, and I know where to park. I know where to park. And I assume you guys are parking there now too, right? If you need to.
Right.
And I don't say why. I mean, I gotta walk all the way over there too to get to you, so...
Do a lap, about half an hour later.
Parking is an issue. I can park right down by the Legion just because, when I do drive. But there is no spaces over there at all anymore. There used to be, you know, unless it was courts, there used to be spaces, you know, randomly available, but not anymore. So, I said that, I think when we were talking about it, that I didn't wanna create another problem. I knew we were gonna create another problem, and we did. But I still think we gotta, we have to discuss this, but the problem, Dan, I agree with you in a way, but I don't agree with you in a way, because we can listen to Head Start, we can listen to, you know, school, we can listen to this, we can listen to that, but that's not gonna do any good, because they all have needs, and we don't have that ability. There's not enough parking in the village.
And I agree with that, Tim, and I appreciate the comment. I guess what I'm hung up on is the way we passed it that night. I don't, like I said, I don't, you know, I've been a huge favor in the school. I can tell you that my son-in-law, who's a principal, has never discussed this once with me. I've discussed it with a couple of other administrators, so anybody that knows me knows that that doesn't intimidate me. I've said all along that parking is on a first comes, first served basis within the village, as it is allowed for by law. It's not our responsibility to guarantee anybody parking, but it's also our responsibility to be fair and cohesive. And I said tonight we passed a law that I voted against, that it very well could be a good law. I just felt that it wasn't going to be, it wasn't presented the way I thought it should be. And maybe I'm wrong, but that's the way I felt, and that's why I voted against it. And then the sign, then we rushed it, the signs were done wrong. You know, I was told that the signs had to be, had to be, we had to do it because the signs needed to be done. Then I find we've not corrected signs in three days. You know, there's a lot of things that I don't understand.
Well, I think the signs will be right, probably right tomorrow. We only got chains up one, right?
As far as safety, safety always trumps all. It showed in the, it always trumps all. One thing it has done is alleviated a lot of the kids crossing there that used to park there, so now I'm wondering if we even need a crossing guard, because most of the kids that were crossing there, quite frankly, that were parking there, were the ones that were being crossed.
You still need a crossing guard there. I monitored it with, with Brad. Traffic flow now is better than it ever has been, but you still get quite a few people that cross the road.
Even if it's three or four, you know, I get it. I'm just saying, that is one thing that it's probably helped. And just give it to me with everything.
So will the signs state that there's eleven or seven spaces available? Or is there not, or is it, like, how will people know that there's seven spaces available?
My plan was, originally, was to get the signs up and actually paint the curb and paint actually spots out there. Now, you'll see there's white paint out there, those were, kinda were trying to figure out where everything was gonna go, so, once I get the correct signage up, the curbing where you can't park will be painted yellow, and everything else will be open, and there'll be little slits twenty feet apart for parking.
Anybody else have anything on public comment? Edgar, you don't have anything tonight?
Negative.
Anybody have anything for executive session? Brings us down to German. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Tom Faver?